Good evening. Welcome to the October 27th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Garino Swaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Hermio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Councilor Novosolsky.
Here.
Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 6th.
All in favor, all opposed? Accepted. Madam Clerk, can we suspend the rules and take the Legislative Affairs Report out of order, please?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So what?
Legislative Affairs Committee Report.
Councilor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item before us tonight was an ordinance further amending Title 13, revised the ordinance for the stormwater management. This was basically a housekeeping item to get in line with new DEP regulations. We are in favor of it, and I ask that a roll call to look on this favorably, please.
Madam Clerk, order on a second reading. Order on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance relative to stormwater management? Councilor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novosolsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
The second item before us was an ordinance repealing Section 9.12.030, posting of political signs of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere. We looked on this favorably, and I ask that a roll call be taken to look on this. Pass this.
Thank you, Councilor. Roll call on a second reading?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, this goes to the next meeting. Yeah, we'll finish the roll.
So, roll call on the second reading, Councilor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Present.
Voting present, Councilor Garino Swaya.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio.
No.
No, Councilor Kelly, yes. Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novosolsky.
No.
No, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the motion is tabled on the second reading. There's an objection.
Mr. President, the third item before us was a motion that I presented, that the City Council approve the following special legislation, an act permitting the city of Revere to establish penalties and liens for rooming house and certificates of fitness ordinance violations. Be it enacted that the state and House of Representatives and General Court, and by the authority of the same as followers, that the city of Revere may issue citations, establish appeal, and hearing process for the citations, file real estate liens to collect unpaid fines, penalties, or assessments from citations, and avail itself to any and all relevant enforcement or procedural provisions provided under 40U. This is specifically to address the rooming house issue that's before us and the problems that residents and ISD has been having trying to enforce this. They have a very tedious process that they have to go through now. We discussed this, and we looked on this favorably, and I ask that the City Council pass this in the affirmative.
Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Shall the City Council approve an act permitting the city of Revere to establish penalties and liens for rooming house and certificates of fitness ordinance violations? Councilor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novosolsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the special act has been approved.
Thank you. The final item before us was an ordinance further amending wage theft policies in the city of Revere. We discussed this, we had some input from a city solicitor, and we passed this, and I asked that the roll call be called to pass this in the affirmative.
Councilor Hermio.
Just a point of personal privilege, I just wanted to thank the Chairman of Legislative Affairs for his work on this, and the colleagues on the subcommittee. I had a longer speech that gave at the subcommittee, and I'll spare you so that we can get to this roll call.
Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clerk, roll call on a second reading. Roll call on a third and final reading. No, yeah. Roll call on engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending wage theft policies in the city of Revere? Councilor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novosolsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Mr. President.
Councilor.
If it's appropriate, I'd like to make a verbal motion at the, at this point.
State your motion.
That the mayor be requested to form a working group made up of members of ISD, the Solicitor's Office, and any other department deemed appropriate, to establish an ordinance requiring all rental properties in Revere to register with the city. This will establish a comprehensive list of all rental properties and institute an inspection of these properties to ensure safe living conditions. I looked into this quite a bit, and the city of Lynn and the city of Boston have an ordinance like this. It requires anyone renting anything in the city to register. This would be a substantial revenue stream. They would register, and then each subsequent year, they would pay a reduced re-registration fee. I know ISD right now isn't fully equipped with inspectors to do this, but that's why I suggested a working group. The city of Lynn and the city of Boston, they're on a five-year inspection rotation, so every year they inspect 20% of these rental properties to ensure that they're safe, and they can find for non-registration, and they can address problem properties. So this, this gives the city a little bit more, and with the 40U that we've just passed, this gives the city some teeth to require everyone to register, set up an inspection for these properties, to make sure that everybody has a safe living condition. So, I'd like to ask for a roll call on that, or any discussion if necessary.
City Councilors. Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to Councilor Argenzio. Is this for property owners that have like a rental unit in their basement as well?
It's any rental unit, even these large buildings. The city of Lynn does have a caveat. If we just inspected one of these large buildings that went up, they would be considered registered, and there's a cap on the amount of money that they would pay. The registration fee is minimal, maybe $50, $40, and then the re-registration would be like $15, but it's just a way of keeping a comprehensive list, so we know what's out there. There's even a large number of people. I know we talk about rooming houses. Rooming houses are three or more unrelated people. There are a ton of people out there renting one bedroom, and I certainly wouldn't want to take that away from the property owner trying to make a few extra bucks, or somebody that has no other option than to just rent a room. I certainly don't want them to take the roof away from, over their head. But this ensures that they get inspected, and that people that are renting rooms aren't living next to the oil burner, or up in the attic through a trapdoor. It would give the city a little responsibility in making sure that anybody that's living in Revere has a safe living condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cogliandro.
I, I have some other questions, but at this point, I'd have to recuse myself from this, from talking about this.
So this, this is why I suggested a working group. This isn't something that's going to be easy to do. It's a Herculean effort, but a lot of other cities do this, and it has proven to be useful to them. So I think as a group assembles, comes up with different questions and different problems that may arise, we can work through this. And this, this will take several months. It's not something that's going to be happening quickly. Thank you.
Councilor Garino Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Argenzio, I was actually working on this for next month. I would like it to include condos as well? Condo inspections as well?
Well, if somebody owns a condo, and they're renting their condo, it would apply to them.
Any other city councilors? Councilor Novosolsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have some questions and some concerns about this, because the normal person that lives in Revere is now going to have to pay extra fees, you know, to be living here, and if they live in the building, it's even going to cost them more to have whatever expenses they have are going to be tacked on to the tenants. So, you know, I would, I would like to see this put in a committee, and so we can discuss it further.
You okay with this going to committee, Councilor?
Well, I don't have no problem, I don't have any problem with it going to committee, but I think if the working group comes up with a plan, presents it to us, and then we can send it to committee. I understand what Councilor Novosolsky has just brought up, but the fee is $40 a year. I mean, so it probably averages out to $3 or $4 a month, so I, I'm not talking exorbitant fees or anything. So, I do think it has to go to committee, but maybe if this working group can come up with some sort of a presentation, and then we can send it to committee at that point, and further discuss it.
Mr. President.
Councilor.
Thank you. I don't have a problem with the working, the problem I have with the working group is they're going to take it as if they are making the final decision, and I don't want that to happen. I want to make sure it's clear that it comes back here, but I still want, even though we send it to the mayor for the committee, I still think we ought to put it in committee and leave it there, so we know we have to get to it eventually.
Okay.
Okay.
This is creating an ordinance, so anything that this group comes up with hypothetically will certainly has to come before us for, for an ordinance. So I, if it goes to committee, I don't know what we would discuss without information from this group. That's my only problem with it just going to committee originally.
Mr. President.
Councilor.
If I may, I'm, I'm saying to split it and let it go both ways, and let it go into the mayor, but keep it here for a final, final decision, and so we have it on the books.
Councilor Cogliandro, recused.
Yes, it's just a procedural question. I'm not here to discuss the Councilor Argenzio's motion. If this goes to subcommittee and it stays there, will it not go sign die at the end of the year? Or is that next year? Is that next year? The 15th of December, so if we keep it in there, it will die in the middle of December. So, that's all, just procedural, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so, are we just, the vote will be on whether a working group is formed to discuss rental properties to paying a fee?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like a roll call on that, Councilor?
Please.
Madam Clerk.
Roll call on Councilor Argenzio's motion. Councilor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro.
Recused.
Recused, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novosolsky.
Present.
Voting present, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the motion is approved.
Mr. President, could we also include Councilor Garino Swaya on that motion?
Madam Clerk. Noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the regular order of business.
Public hearings, calendar item number three. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending Title 12 of the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to construction procedures for street and sidewalk openings.
Anyone here before this? Do you have any proponents? Anyone here in favor? Hearing none, closing that side. Opponents? Anyone here opposed? Closing that side, councilors? Okay, Madam Clerk. This will be going to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number four. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Proponents? Anyone here in favor? Closing that side. Opponents? Anyone here against? Closing that side. City councilors? Okay, this will be going to Legislative Affairs also.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending Title 12 and Title 17 of the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to overhanging signs and storefront sign maintenance.
Proponents? Anyone here in favor? Hearing none, closing that side. Opponents? Anyone here against? Okay, city councilors? Okay, this will go to Legislative Affairs as well.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Revere Beach Waterfront JV LLC, 84th State Street, Boston, Mass., requesting a Chapter 148 license for the storage of flammables to be exercised at 560 Revere Beach Boulevard for the following uses: 589 parking space garage, and 1,200 gallons of diesel fuel above-ground storage tank.
Proponents? Petitioner?
Yes, Mr. President, good evening. Tying up a, all of the procedures and proceedings that are required for a certificate of occupancy. As the council may be aware, this is one of the newer projects on, on Revere Beach. It was approved by the site plan review and sent through without requiring any relief from the Board of Appeals and no permits from this, from the city council. The buildings themselves, as I think set out in the application, is 357 units, and there's studios, ones and twos. The reason we're here for the Chapter 148 license for storage of flammables is for the 300, I'm sorry, the 589 cars that are approved for parking, and it pertains to the gas, gasoline in the, in the tanks. Additionally to that, there is a 1,200, 1,200 gallons of diesel fuel to be stored on, on-site, to run generators in case of an emergency where power outage or some sort of a catastrophe. This was looked at by the fire department, the deputy has inspected it, he has overlooked our application, the plans, and found everything in order, and I believe he signed off to approve it. With the application, we submitted all of the plans showing the parking, the parking garage, where the stalls would be, also the tanks, where the diesel fuel would be, would be kept, all of the safety matters that pertain to the storage of the diesel fuel, and any other pertinent information with regard to fire safety and indeed health and safety matters at the, at the building. I would respectfully request that the council approve this affirmatively. If there are any questions regarding some of the engineering here, Rick Salvo from, who you're well familiar with, from Engineering Alliance is here. Tim Alexander, who's the lead on this, and has managed the project to get it up out of the ground and finished, he would be able to answer any of the questions that the council may have with regard to the building itself.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thanks, sir.
Do we have any other proponents? Anyone else here in favor? Hearing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents? Anyone here against? Hearing none, we'll close that side. Councilor Garino Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a no-brainer. It has 300 and something units, and they've given us 500 and something parking spots, so I have no problem with this, and they have followed every protocol procedure. I spoke to Cheever's today, and he said everything that they're doing is within their right, and they are following every protocol that he has set forth in front of them. So I have no problem with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. For many years, I've been saying that this license should only be issued by the fire department, should never be before the city council. However, this particular building, I think, is the first in many years to be built with complete right, not, not any variance, not any special permit from the city council. It's, it's quite a, quite a building, and it's quite, you know, there's 589 parking spots for 300 and something units, pretty good. And so, of course, I'm in favor of this, but I'm still making my pitch that someday we won't be voting on this, and the fire chief will sign off on it. And it takes some, it really takes some special legislation, which is ridiculous, but that's what it will take. Anyways, I'm certainly in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other city councilors? Okay, closing that side. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Shall the city council approve a Chapter 148 license to be exercised at 560 Revere Beach Boulevard for its stated purposes? Councilor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novosolsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 license has been approved. Public comment pursuant to Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Revere residents, business owners. If you have anything to discuss, please come up, state the motion you'll be speaking on. You have two minutes. Please give your name, address, and again, the motion you'll be speaking on.
Keep on forgetting that. Thank you. Jim McCurry, 193, Crescent Ave, Wood One. I'd like to.
Motion.
Yep, I was just getting that. I'd like to talk about motion 25-286, the Christopher Columbus statue. I think this is a great motion, and this should have been brought up a long time ago. It's, you know, very meaningful to our community that the formal designation of the Christopher Columbus statue at St. Anthony's Church be designated as a historical landmark. The statue has stood for decades as a symbol of faith, family, and heritage for the people of Revere. It was built through the efforts of local residents and the Knights of Columbus, which I am a member of, a very proud member of, and continues to serving as a great gathering spot for celebrations like the Christopher Columbus Parade that we used to have, and other events. The motion asks for the city council to support this, endorse it, and recognize the statue's historical and cultural importance by working together with Representative Jeff Turco and the Archdiocese of Boston, along with the Knights of Columbus in Revere. We could take the steps needed to apply for the National Historic Designation to the National Park Service. Doing so would help to ensure that this monument, and what it represents, is protected and preserved for future generations. It's not only a tribute to the Italian-American heritage and Catholic faith, but also the broader spirit of the community that defines Revere. So I strongly would, and would like you all to support this motion, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone? Okay, closing public comments.
Communications, calendar item number 11. Communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Ellie Vargas to the Disability Commission.
This will be referred to appointments on November 24th.
Calendar item number 12. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Nicholas Godin to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Appointments, November 24th.
Calendar item number 13. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Jaclyn Damiano to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Appointments on November 24th.
Calendar item number 14. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Wilson Correa to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Refer to appointments, November 24th.
Calendar item number 15. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of David Leary to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Refer to appointments, November 24th.
Calendar item number 16. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Natalia Ardagna to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Appointments, November 24th.
Calendar item number 17. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of John Shannon Bianchi to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
This will be referred to zoning. No, appointments, November 24th.
Calendar item number 18. Communication from the Chief of Planning and Community Development, requesting time to conduct a presentation on the work of the North Suffolk Office of Resiliency and Sustainability.
Okay, anyone here to discuss? Okay, all in favor, all opposed? So what? No? Did I miss it? This will be going to climate sustainability on December 1st.
Motions. Calendar item number 19. Motion presented by Councilor Kelly, that the city council request Mr. Vemshi Pauli of Revere.City to conduct a presentation on his AI-powered public data accessibility platform.
Councilor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Pauli contacted me months ago, several months ago, actually. He is a resident of Revere.
He is a resident of Riviere, who completed his master's degree in Applied Machine Intelligence at Northeastern University. And he contacted me with this wonderful, I think, website, that is, an AI-generated website, that has a whole host of municipal facts, and just an incredible amount of data and information. He's passionate about using technology to benefit communities, so he independently created this interactive website using AI. And it's called Riviere.City. It's a free, open-source dashboard containing public data in one interactive hub. At this point, I don't know if it's something that we'd be interested in, but I think that we should, I'd like to at least give him the opportunity to come in and give us a little demonstration on the site, give him an opportunity to share with everyone what he created, and then we can decide whether or not we think this would be beneficial. I think it would be a great tool and a great resource, not only for us, but also for residents as well, so I'd like to try to give him that opportunity to come in and just give us a brief demonstration. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any other councils? Okay, Madam Clerk? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Council President Silvestri, that the mayor request the city's policy writer and analyst to draft an ordinance banning cryptocurrency ATMs and kiosks from being operated in the city of Riviere. Further, that the city council send a letter to the Joint Committee on Financial Services in favor of Bill 1247, an act relative to preventing fraud and establishing regulations on certain virtual, virtual currencies.
Permission to speak from the chair?
Yes.
Okay, so, but a week ago, two weeks maybe, there was actually a 2020 show on, on this. It's becoming a, a growing issue. They're targeting elderly, senior citizens, and, you know, this is no way in shape or form am I saying that, you know, there's not a legal, safe way to invest in cryptocurrency? Not it. But these ATMs are literally, are ninety percent use, has been reported in DC on scams. They're taking, they're, they're, they're prying on, on elderly, get, get rich quick schemes, and the thing is, there's no, there's nowhere to get after that. So they're, they're tracing where the money's going, they're tracing how it gets there. The store gets paid that has the ATM machines, the company gets paid that's doing the transaction, the thief gets the money that they, they conned out of the elderly person, and the person who just could put all their life savings into this machine gets nothing. There's literally no way to be, for, for them to get that money back, and I think that we need to regulate that. Other cities around the area are looking at it, and I think before we allow this, we, the state needs to, to regulate this space a lot more than, than it is. Consul Garino-Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this past weekend, I went into Walmart, I had to buy gift cards. So I bought, I think it was eight twenty-dollar gift cards. They made me go to customer service, and I didn't understand why I had to go to customer service. And exactly what you are talking about is what they said to me, because there could be somebody outside who's forcing me to buy them the twenty-dollar gift cards. So they wanted to make sure that it, nobody was forcing my hand to purchase those. And what's been happening, I've also spoken to somebody at the police department, they said the seniors, immigrants, are very, very, seniors and immigrant people are very vulnerable in the community to have this type of scam. And there's also been a number of, like, romance scams. Oh, they're meeting somebody online, and they're asking for these gift cards and all this, this cryptocurrency online. And this is a great motion, and thank you so much for putting up and looking out for our seniors and our residents.
Thank you, Consul. Any other councils? Okay, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Councilors McKenna, Garino-Swaya, Cogliandro, and Ragenzio, that the mayor request Representative Turco, in conjunction with the Massachusetts Historical Commission, to collaborate with the Archdiocese of Boston for the purpose of nominating the statue of Christopher Columbus located at 250 Riviere Street as a national historic landmark.
Consul McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to add Consul Silvestri to this motion, please.
Go ahead, me?
Yes, and, and Consul Zambudo? And Cons, and Consul?
I think the whole council.
The whole council? Okay, all right. Excuse me? If the whole counselor doesn't want to be on it, want?
To be a story.
I don't know. I don't know. All right.
Sorry, but Consul President Silvestri, Consul Zambudo, and also?
Garino, and, oh, Garino's on it, and Janino?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask? Okay. Are there any more?
Okay.
You can have me, too.
Okay.
Okay, in 1892, the Christopher Columbus statue was sculpted by Eloise Bidens and presented to the Archbishop Williams by the Knights of Columbus on October 12th, 1892. It was gifted by Cardinal O'Connell to the Italian residents of Riviere, and ordered the statue be moved from Boston in 1925 to the piazza in front of the St. Anthony's Church, which was once noted as an Italian Catholic congregation. My last name might be McKenna, but I am first-generation Italian. When World War II broke out, my mother was nineteen years old. Her town, Ancona, Italy, was one of the first towns to be taken over by the German army and eventually bombed. My grandma, grandfather took my mother, my aunt, and my nana by motorcycle to stay in a relative, with a relative in Florence. From there, the bombing intensified into Florence. My grandfather, out after Curfew, was taken by the Germans and put in a Polish concentration camp for three years to be used as slave labor. My grandmother crossing a farm field to get milk and bread stepped on a landmine, survived, but was in the hospital for over a year. The bombs eventually destroyed my relative's home in Florence, and my mother and aunt, Liana, were homeless, and had fended for themselves for three years. Both survived by living in train stations, in the convents with nuns, and in the woods. It wasn't until the war was over and the American Army liberated Florence she met my father. My mother came to this country with only a three-month-old baby, my brother Gilberto, which is Gilbert now, and landed on Ellis Island. For the longest time in this country, my mother was discriminated and not welcomed because she was Italian. Last Thursday, I met with Father Xavier, Pastor Paul, the spiritual director, and the committee of St. Anthony's. We talked about many issues, but a concern brought up was when, five years ago, an unnamed organization wanted to remove the statue. The congregation never wanted to see this happen again. I presented what the city council would like to do, and it was well-received, and they would like to move forward with it. The Christopher Columbus statue has been in St. Anthony's property for over a hundred years, a historical monument, and now, going forward, a landmark in the city of Riviere. This is a tribute to my mother, and what the Italian immigrant people endured coming to the country to make a better life for themselves and their family. October is Italian Heritage Month, what a better time to put a motion in and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any other city? Consul Garino-Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a first-generation Italian-American, I see that Christopher Columbus statue at 250 Riviere Street as an important part of my heritage and my history. I was born right when my parents got to America, through Ellis Island, and we've always looked at St. Anthony's, been, we've always gone to St. Anthony's Church, and we've looked at that statue as part of our heritage. I don't know if everyone is aware, but this past weekend, I was in front of St. Anthony's Church, and somebody actually hit the sign. They, the sign is on the ground that says Columbus Square, Christopher Columbus Square. So we need to get that fixed as soon as possible as well. They, they, they hit, we're St. Anthony's, where the Jesus statue is. So that's going to have to be done immediately as well. But thank you so much, Joan, for including, including me in this, because this is special to my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a proud Italian-American, second-generation Cogliandro. Five years ago, there were threats to take that statue down, and now we're here making it a landmark. This is a proud day. I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Consul? Any Consul Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a wonderful motion. I support it wholeheartedly, of course. I remember the horror a few years back when we had some marches for, to be specific, the Black Lives Matter March, and one of the people stood up and said, "That statue has to go." And I think if we go through with this, that'll never happen. It'll never happen as long as I'm alive, but still, it was horrifying to hear someone say that. And we, we all saw that in this country, a lot of statues were taken down. Thankfully, they're being put back now, and our history was, was being erased. This is, this is our heritage, our history, and it's not going to be erased. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any other councils? Consul Kelly.
I think this is an excellent motion. I couldn't support it anymore. I think it's wonderful. I'm a second generation, my last name is Kelly, but I am a second-generation Italian-American as well, and this is something that is just important to the city, and it, it should be a historical landmark. There is absolutely no doubt about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any other councils? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Consul Cogliandro, that the mayor be requested to dedicate the early childhood playground at the Lincoln School in memory of Chris
Consul Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin, I'd like to add Consul Haas to this motion, and if it's okay to add Mr., Council President Silvestri as well. I, I want to read something that was emailed to me by someone who wishes to remain anonymous, and I want to read it because I, I couldn't speak any better than, than this. "I believe the new earlyhood childhood, the new early childhood playground at the Lincoln School should be dedicated to Chris Chavaria, because his life and spirit represent the very best of our community. Chris was a bright, kind, and joyful student who once walked the halls of the Lincoln School as a fifth grader. Even while facing a rare and aggressive leukemia, he showed remarkable courage, positivity, and love for others. The playground represents more than just a space for children to play. It symbolizes growth, imagination, friendship, and hope. These are the very qualities that Chris embodied every day. Naming the playground in his honor would allow his spirit to continue inspiring the students who follow in his footsteps. It would serve as a reminder to all who visit that child, that, excuse me, all who visit, that every child, no matter how brief their time with us, can make a profound difference through kindness, courage, and love. By dedicating the Lincoln School's early childhood playground to Chris, we celebrate his life, we honor his family, and we affirm the values that make our school community strong: compassion, resilience, and the belief that even the smallest, the smallest acts of joy can leave the greatest legacy." Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to Consul Cogliandro for submitting this motion. Fantastic motion. His parents referred to him, Chris, as a soldier, and he showed a tremendous amount of courage in life, and the Lincoln School really came together for him. Shows what kind of, what kind of child and what kind of friend he was to the community around him, and I think it's a great motion to support and honor his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Permission to speak from the chair? So, Consul Cogliandro Haas, thank you for adding me to this, this emotion that is, is amazing. Chris was an amazing young man. The spirit in which he lived, I got to know for, for a good year solid, we, we got to spend time and, and talk, and we ran a blood drive for Chris. In the amount of community outreach and pouring that came out, and, and the amount of, of love and joy that was shown to that young man, there's, there's couldn't be a better motion. I couldn't support it anymore, and I want to thank you for, for adding me. Consul Garino-Swaya.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to end up crying, and I'm sorry. Chris was a truly special little boy. His courage, spirit, and joy touched everyone who knew him. I remember going on one of his blood drives, and though I couldn't give him blood, I was able to give him an angel that was given to me by my friend Patty when I was sick. The mo, that moment, that small boy put that in his hand, he was ecstatic, he started crying, and he was called his mom, "Mom, mom, look what she gave me." And his mom had told me that he kept that till the day he passed, and it was, like, so important to him. His bravery and his radiant spirit will never be forgotten in this playground. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Consul Cogliandro, for putting this through. It's going to be a place that he exemplified, where kids can play and laugh and grow, like, carrying his love and courage and joy forward, and thank you so much for putting this through. It, it means a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any other councils? All in favor, all opposed? All right, so ordered.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Consul Cogliandro, that the mayor direct the chief of police to station a police officer directing traffic at the intersection of East Mountain Avenue and Cary Avenue at the end of each school day in the interest of public safety.
Consul Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the motion speaks for itself, and Chief LaVita could not be here, but she is notified, and she's working on it, so hopefully everyone supports it. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Councilors Cogliandro and McKenna, that the city council, in collaboration with the mayor, city planner, and any other relevant stakeholders, begin a formal discussion on the feasibility of implementing tolls on certain city roads. Multiple state highways run through the city, putting a significant strain on the city's residents and its infrastructure without any financial compensation from Massachusetts.
Consul Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, I don't think I have to explain why this idea was put forward. In, in doing research, there's been multiple cities throughout the country that have done this, only to have these municipalities be taken over by the state, which is fine. But I think because we are a pass-through city, we have train stations, we have the first public beach, we are a legitimate cut-through city, and we don't get any aid or any, any extra revenue to help us because of that, I think it's time to cut, this will help cut down traffic, this will help increase revenue. I mean, we, imagine what we could do for our infrastructure if we did something like this. And I understand that this starts here, this is, you know, would have to be put in as a home rule petition, but it's a, I think it's a good idea, it's a great revenue stream, it's not going to cost us any money, we don't have to do any enforcement, because they just work on their own. So I, you know, hoping we can support the idea of having a, a group of people get together and talk about this, and see if it is something that we want to move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Walking door-to-door, one of the asks was, the overdevelopment is causing so much traffic in Riviere, what can we do about the city traffic? Yes, that would be a certain percentage, but the major reason, reason is because Riviere is a cut-thrus, through for many communities going in and out of Boston. Bennington Street alone has 12,000 cars a day cutting through Beauchamp. Riviere has one, if, if not the highest car insurance in Massachusetts. Why? Because there are so many accidents. The Department of Transportation counts the accidents in the city, not just by Riviere residents, by everyone. In January of 2025, the New York Department of Transportation in Manhattan implemented toll charges as a part of a new congestion price program, which charges, which, which charges most passengers' vehicles nine dollars per day to enter the zone below Sixtieth Street during peak hours. The peak hours are weekdays from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and weekdays from eight, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Motorcycles pay four fifty, commuter buses pay nothing. Commercial- Commercial trucks pay between $14 and $40, or $21.80, depending on their size. Taxis and Uber drivers pay $0.75. There are many other countries that do this. London and Stockholm have this method. And it's not far-fetched for Revere to charge cars from towns, from other towns and cities, to use our roads and get to their destination. It's already existed in Massachusetts. Route 93, you have to pay a toll. Route 95, you pay a toll, and going in and out of Boston, you pay a toll. With this revenue, we can pay for a new high school and an infrastructure that is needed of repair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you for the leeway. I just want to also add Counselor Garino Sawia to this motion. And I also want to state that, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up, the goal would be to have Revere residents and employees be exempt from paying any tolls for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, although I understand where everybody's coming from, but in reality, and being reasonable, okay, this will never happen because it has to be approved by Mast Dot. And we passed this back in 2009 on a motion by one of our counselors to put a toll booth on Ocean Avenue. Now, here it is, 2025. Do you see that toll booth? It was never approved. It was never even considered by Mast Dot. So, you know, I'm just trying to be reasonable here. We know it's not going to happen, and I have a lot of concerns about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harmio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I happen to think this is a brilliant idea, and I know, I know. I was going to ask you if I can be added on it. You know, I think dynamic pricing and tolls around the city would definitely encourage something that's been something that I've been speaking a lot about, certainly to residents, which is the use of public transportation. We're so lucky to live within a city that has not one but two rapid transit spots, three rapid transit spots, yes, forgot. Don't worry, I remembered the Beauchamp one. It was the Wondellin one that's for that. Not two, but three rapid transit, and a stone's throw away from a fourth one. And we have at least five bus lines that run east, west, north, and south. And so I think this is actually a right move. You know, whether it happens or not, you know, that remains to be seen, and I agree with my colleague, Counselor Novoselsky. But at the very least, I would be willing to support a conversation around this. So if the counselor from the Great Ward Three would have me on this motion, I'd be honored to be, to join.
Absolutely.
Any other Counselors want to join Team Tax? Counselor Sawia.
Since the day I took office, I've been advocating for measures to address the traffic concerns in Ward Five, especially with our neighborhood serving as a cut-through city for all vehicles in the North Shore. I believe it's imperative that we consider implementing these tolls on certain city roads. The first road I would look at is North Shore Road. The very first road I would look at. Currently, cars from the surrounding communities, including Lynn, Sargus, Marblehead, Manchester-by-the-Sea, Swampscorn, Salem, use North Shore Road as a thoroughway. If we implemented a toll of $0.50 per car and returned $0.40 to the state, and the city of Revere only kept $0.10 per vehicle, do you know how much money the city of Revere would make? Because it's not Revere residents that are driving down North Shore Road, it's everybody coming through the city of Revere. So it will generate millions of dollars at the end of the year for just one road. Beyond revenue, such as the tolls could reduce, it would lessen the traffic, it would lessen the strain on our infrastructure because people don't want to pay the money, and improve the safety and quality of life for our residents. So I absolutely commend Counselor Cogliandro and Counselor McKenna for adding me on this. I appreciate you both. And stop laughing because I'm serious. This is like day one. This is what I wanted. And thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselors? Permission to speak from the chair? Okay. I highly respect all of my fellow Counselors here, but I adamantly disagree with this. In this meeting, in the past half hour, I've heard we're going to charge our working-class residents to move into or live into an apartment. We're now going to tax drivers to drive on our streets. And then when Lynn turns around and does the same thing to our drivers, and Malden does the same thing, we're going down a slippery slope here, guys. I get everyone cuts to our roads. I get what we're trying to do here. But sitting up here as a body advocating for more money to put on our residents' heads is something I can't be in support of. I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
We're not talking about taxing the city of Revere or charging the city of Revere. They would be exempt from this. It would be anybody coming through, just like we have to pay to go through the Sumner Tunnel or any of the other tunnels going into Boston. We pay. Chelsea doesn't pay. East Boston doesn't pay, but the city of Revere has to pay. So why can't everybody else pay us? That's all.
Counselor, I'm going to just answer that, and I don't want to go back and forth, but for the same reason why then the city of Malden-Lynn-Everett would then say, "Revere drivers are going to pay us $0.50." I mean, if this is the battle we want to get into, I don't think we're the body that should be doing it. That's just my opinion, but that's all.
Mr. President.
Counselor Harmio.
I just want to say that, you know, I emphasize the point about the amount of public transit availability that the city of Revere has because I think a lot of people that live in our city, which has usually been a working-class base for places like Boston, the hospitals, the universities, et cetera, actually do take public transit over cars because, A, affordability, it's cheaper to take public transit, and B, because of convenience. And I think that the things that communities like ours have struggled for a very long time, and the state quite honestly, which is why we passed the fair share amendment, everyone voted for it, to tax the ultra-rich, was to ensure that we can have the money and resources for our own public infrastructure. And I think that's why this is a good idea, in my book, is that this actually would allow the city to potentially, and again, you know, I want to highlight what Counselor Novoselsky has said, to have the resources it needs for its roads, for its bridges, and potentially help enhance or expand our public transportation infrastructure between, within the city and even regionally at a time where our federal government has been cut and attacked, and the budget for our public infrastructure has been slashed at a time where there are multi-billionaires proposing revenue cut on themselves that would cut 20% of the income tax, or income revenue that the Commonwealth receives, which would then be translated to deteriorating roads and schools and fire and police. I just want to say that this is about increasing accessibility to the cheapest, most affordable way to transport yourself around the region, which is why, again, I'm in favor of it and commend Counselor Cogliandro and Counselor McKenna for working on this.
I guess I'm going to ask for some leeway because I'm going to respond. Counselor Harmio, you're the same city council that is advocating for free tea transportation, correct? So now we're going to tax our own residents to drive to give free tea. Both worlds can't, we can't live in both worlds. We can't do free transportation and then tax other people to get to there. I just disagree. Counselor Cogliandro.
Mr. President, just because you've named me in your response.
Yep, I did.
I threw you to the members because I definitely did not direct that comment towards you, but, Counselor, you took it that way. The study after study, transportation study after transportation study, has showed that if we increase accessibility to public transportation, people will take it. And if we make it harder for folks to get in those cars, people will take the transportation. The problem right now the Commonwealth has is with our aging infrastructure, we do not have the resources to enhance our public transportation options. And again, private cars, you can fit 11 people or 12 people in the space that you can fit in one small Corolla, and moving that amount of people on a train and on a bus, it's not only more economically efficient for the user, but it is also the right thing to do for the environment. It is also the right thing to do for our working-class families, Mr. President. Public transportation, bus and train, are the cheapest form of transportation, hands-down, other than walking or biking, over the usage of cars. So I hear your point, and I take your point, and I really appreciate it, and I'm glad that we're having this discussion. And it's so important to note that the cost of owning a car, paying taxes on a car, the cost of gas are far greater than the cost of a one-way ride into Boston on the blue line. And from the North Shore, with the ferries that are available, I mean, we are talking about, if this were to pass, we could be collaborating with our sister cities in the region to increase public transportation from the North Shore into Boston so that we alleviate the traffic and the congestion that we're seeing here in the city of Revere with these resources. Again, this is all highly hypothetical, and I will concede, and I do agree, that we're probably not the right body to be having these conversations. But since we're having the conversation, I really want to emphasize that it is far more expensive to own a vehicle than to jump on the blue line. Thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway.
You're welcome, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you for the leeway.
Mr. President, I asked to speak, and you let him three times already.
I will, Counselor, I will wait for Counselor Novoselsky to have his turn.
Counselor Cogliandro. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President. So, and to that point, I agree with everything that's been set up here. Counselor Harmio just said, "We are not the body that should be having this conversation," and I completely agree. That's why I want to have it with stakeholders, the real people that are going to make decisions like this. I agree with you, Counselor Silvestri, Mr. President, that this is going to potentially open up a can of worms. I do feel that Revere has more of an argument to be made to have some sort of fee structure through tolls than most other cities do because of everything that we have here and how we're riddled with state roads, and again, to bring up the train stations and whatnot. But it could potentially open a can of worms. And I do agree with Counselor Novoselsky. Mast Dot will laugh at this. They will. And that's the truth. So, you know what? I'm going to squash all the rest of the conversation here, hopefully, except for Counselor Novoselsky, who's been waiting patiently. The bigger conversation is, we deserve to be getting revenue for the impact to our infrastructure, to everything that goes on in our city because of this traffic. Toll is just an opening conversation. Let's sit down and figure this out. The state needs to look at Revere and say, "You know what? You guys are dealing with a lot. You are congested. You do have a beach. You are riddled with state roads. What can we do to help Revere?" That's the bigger conversation here, and if we can get money from the state to help us pay, because Chapter 90 funds are getting lower and lower every year. How many streets got paved? How many sidewalks have been done this year? Less and less, and it's no one's fault. It's no one's fault. So how do we generate revenue? Toll is an initial conversation, okay? And I agree, toll is a taxation. And then they could say, "You know what? You want to tax us to drive through your city, you got to pay to drive through us." I completely agree. So what's the real answer here? Is tolls the conversation? No. I don't really think it is. It could be. They could put tolls on, if they put tolls on Route 1 North, getting off on Desquieu Road, that high school would be built off of that toll by itself. Tell me I'm wrong. Tell me I'm wrong. But I'm just saying. I know that this will be laughed at by Mast Dot. I don't think, I don't know if it's going to make it out of this room, let alone the mayor's office, or the state reps, or the senate, and the governor. That's the way this would have to go. So let's start a bigger conversation then, because it seems like, I don't want anyone arguing up here.
No, I know.
Five days before the election, let's, you know, woo-sah, everybody.
Tensions are high.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky.
I welcome this, and I want to, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I want to thank you for allowing this debate, and I appreciate all my colleagues for having.
That's why we're here. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, with all due respect to everybody, okay? We have to look at reality here. Even if there were toll booths put on state roads in Revere, okay, we wouldn't get a penny out of it. We would not get a penny out of it because the state would take all the funds. They may feed us a few bucks, but not enough to build a new high school. And not enough to pave 20 other roads in Revere. We'd be lucky to get anything out of it, if not pennies. And it wouldn't be worth it. It wouldn't be worth the headache. And, you know, I'm just being reasonable, and I appreciate everybody's thoughts on it with all due respect. But there's no way I can see this going through. Thank you.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you. This is a little off-topic, but I'm just glad that everyone here is just discussing and recognizing the fact that we do have a congestion and a traffic problem to begin with because so many times I see, at least the narrative for the last two years that I've been here, when developments are proposed and the narrative is that, "Traffic? No, there's no traffic, so that's no issue. We can put this up and put that up and put this up." And I understand here we're talking about traffic coming in from other cities and not necessarily being generated by our residents that live here, but nevertheless, our residents have to put up with it. So I'm glad that we're at least recognizing tonight that we do have an issue. So thank you to everyone.
Any other Counselors? All in favor, all opposed? No. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call on Council Order 25-289. Counselor Agenzio?
No.
No. Counselor Cogliandro.
Could you repeat that? I'm so sorry.
Sure. Motion presented by Counselors Cogliandro, McKenna, Garino Sawia, and Harmio that the city council, in collaboration with the mayor, city planner, and any other relevant stakeholders, begin a formal discussion on the feasibility of implementing tolls on certain city roads. Multiple state highways run through the city, putting a significant strain on the city's residents and its infrastructure without any financial compensation from Massachusetts. On the motion, Counselor Agenzio, was no. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
No.
No. Counselor Garino Sawia?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
No.
No. Counselor Harmio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
No.
No. Counselor Zambudo is recused. Counsel President Silvestri?
No.
No. Motion fails.
Madam Clerk, I would like to put a motion on the table to request the mayor to start conversation with Mast Dot on getting the city of Revere their fair share of the tolls that are now in the city, as i.e. other cities that surround the bridge get no toll pass. They do get other things, and I believe that we should start that conversation.
Point of information.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've put this motion in three times since in the last 10 years. I've even gone to the State House with Rosely Vincent and Stephen Maravito to get this done, and it's just, it's poo-poo. It's just, they don't even look at us. So to get...
I say we give it one more shot, Counselor.
Okay, sounds good to me. Thank you.
Counselor.
I'm sorry. I'm a little confused. We just shot down a motion to have a conversation, and now that got shot down, now we're asking to have another one.
Wait. No, it wasn't.
That in no way would have binded us to have, to put tolls in. I don't want to bring it up. It's over, but I'm just saying, you know.
Okay, but this is a conversation to get our fair share at the tolls that already exist in the state, not putting new tolls into the city, Counselor.
But we just had someone testify that we're not going to get anything but pennies from something like that. So what's the use? This is what I don't understand.
I think they're totally, I think they're night and day, Counselor.
We could have been having a conversation about Revere getting what it deserves, you know, but now we're going to share the current, you know, that's all. That's, that's all I'm saying. It just doesn't make much sense to me to turn one down and not the other. That's all.
Oh, okay.
Mr. President?
Counselor?
With, with all due respect to everybody's, this conversations, this particular motion does not affect the city in itself. It affects each individual driver that drives over the bridge or through the tunnel, either tunnels. And the city doesn't get any money. I mean, we just get a, people just get a reduced rate, and I believe it's 40 cents.
It's 85 cents.
How much?
It's 85.
85 that they pay now? Yeah, so, but it, but the individual residents get the reduced rate. The city doesn't get anything out of it in general.
President, just to reiterate, so that the mayor requests the state legislature to provide the City of Revere, provide City of Revere residents with a reduced toll rate, such as City of Chelsea and East Boston?
Yes.
Okay. On Counselor Silvestri's motion? Did you want a roll call or what do you do?
Please.
Roll call on Counselor Silvestri's verbal motion. Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo is recused and Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is approved.
Mr. President?
Counselor Cogliandro?
Through you to Madam Clerk. Is it out of parliamentary procedure or against the rules of order for me to bring the, pass the last motion back up for reconsideration right now on the floor? Or would I have to do that in another meeting?
It's, the city council makes its own rules. They can, you know, it's whatever the public body decides.
So I'm sure there'll be, there'll be a vote for reconsideration, and I'm going to tell you why. We just voted to have a conversation about getting our fair share of tolls. All this passed motion just asked for was to begin a formal discussion on the feasibility of implementing tolls on certain city roads. That's it. It's just a discussion. So if we want to vote it down again, that's fine. I'd like to bring it up for reconsideration. I'd like a roll call on the reconsideration.
They're not, they're, it's, we're talking about pretty much the same thing.
Suspended, and the suspension of rules to take up Counselor Cogliandro's reconsideration.
Counselor Novosolsky just requested a roll call on the suspension of rules.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Roll call to suspend rules. Counselor Agenzio?
No.
No. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
No.
No. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
No.
No. Counselor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novosolsky?
No.
No. Counselor Zambudo is recused on suspension of rules?
Yes.
And Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes. Suspension of rules fails.
Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number 25. Motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor requests the police department to place electronic message boards around the city, reminding the residents there is an election and to vote on November 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as I walk, people don't know this, November 4th is an election, and I feel like we're going to have a low turnout. So I just got a text from Chief Levita saying that she will put the sign boards out and remind everybody that November 4th is Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other city counselors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 26. Motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the mayor requests Mast dot to resynchronize the traffic signalization at the intersection of Revere Street and North Shore Road in the interest of public safety. Counselor Zambudo is recused.
Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris Chammel has informed me that the state has already addressed and corrected the issue this past week. Thank you.
Okay. So are you, are you pulling your motion, Counselor? Placing a file? Okay. Madam Clerk, placing a file.
Calendar item number 27. Motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the mayor requests the city engineer and/or Department of Public Works, in coordination with National Grid, to evaluate the street lighting conditions along Breed Street near St. Anthony of Padua Church, specifically in the area west of the chapel toward the rear parking lot, to determine if additional